This is February, wow, February 13th. So I'm for an appeals meeting which starts now, it's like 7:03. We have, I guess we have a full number of people to vote. So that's good. We have Soria, and Shaw, and myself, Hank Vesco, Cindy, and Robert Wiznius. So we are good. So we have the whole team. So I suppose we can... John Paul, you gonna present?
Yes. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is John Paul Garcia. I'm a licensed professional engineer in Lays of Air, licensed doctor in the state of Connecticut, Principal Office 193 Road to Towne-Bethany. I'm here representing the owners of property at Oak Hill Road in Towne-Woodbridge in seeking of a variance. People in question have the corner lot on the corner of Oak Hill and Rimmon. And he wants to put a 24-by- 24 barn. Oh, let's try that. With me or the Polinski say? The owners of property?
Yes.
And what happens is, this is a corner lot. So most lots on Woodbridge, which are interior lots, have a front yard and then two side yards and a rear yard. Here they have two front yards, which are 75 feet plus. But a large portion of the lot is essentially unusable. They can't use the back of the house because it's steep and there's the driveway here and patio. The side of the house they can't use because there's wetlands on this side, against the rim road side. And in the front of the house on the left-hand side is the septic system. So they can't use this area because you need this for septic system. So what they would like to do is put it in the front. We sent you a picture of what it looks like. He's gonna put it in the ground. So what you'll essentially see is something similar to a root cellar. Or, you know, it's hogged in so that you'll see maybe two or three feet of the wall plus the roof. As opposed to seeing, you know, 10-foot wall and a roof. So it's relatively inaccurate. But like I said, the problem he has is one of topography, that the parcel, the corner lot, has a large amount of land removed due to setback requirements. Woodbridge's setback requirements are 75 feet. The side yard is 25. So he's got 275 and 225. And that's the hardship. He's got no other place to put it. You know, he's coming up against existing grade, existing driveway, wetlands, and the septic system. That's why you couldn't put it back in here. Because the septic system's here. We need the area. We also have to dig test pits here for a septic reserve area. When you do an addition or a new building, anywhere in a town that has septic systems, it's called B-100A soils testing. You have to prove that you have a code-compliant area to allow you to build a septic reserve system. So that takes this area out. So we're stuck. And so that's the reason for coming before you to make the request for variance.
Couldn't that be moved right against, it's up against the setback there, where your finger is right now?
That's the septic system.
And that entire thing is the septic system?
Yes, sir. The septic system is located through the Beechwood, right here.
Oh, I see.
And this is the septic reserve area down here, here. We still have to dig test holes. And putting it here, you put it in the front of the house.
So you're gonna have an additional driveway to get to this?
Yeah, he's probably gonna do something similar to this, in which he'll attach it off to the, that turnaround that he has here, just go right in. He's gonna turn, he's gonna face the garage doors towards Rimmon Road. Correct?
That's correct.
For the record, that's here. Yeah, so it just ties right in. And then the garage, so you won't be seeing the garage doors. Garage doors will be facing this way.
So there's a turnaround there, and then there's a driveway?
Yeah, just the driveway right here. So all he'll do is put this in here, and then it connects right into the turn.
And that's the only location you could go in the entire property?
Essentially, yes. You have wetlands here, and you've got setback here. So this is all setback. So the only little place to put it in here is in the back, and you've got a grade and a driveway issue.
What does he have now? Does he have a barn now?
He's got a two-car garage here.
You can't attach anything to the house?
No, there's no room to attach anything to the house. If you can't put it here because you have a septic tank and a septic system. You can't put it here because you have a room that's in front of the house. I mean, it's gonna look like heck. Yeah, we thought about it a lot. But that's not, it's not, there are any number of instances in town where you have this exact problem on houses that were built in the 1920s, 1930s, 1940s. You know, before a lot of this stuff got passed. So like I said, it's not an unusual request. And to be honest with you, he's 40-something, he's 48 feet from the front setback. Towne, Island, and Bethany, our setbacks are 50.
Well, that's another question. He can't move the back end though?
No, we can't move the back end, but...
You can change it, so don't worry about it.
No, why, no, 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 we don't want to go there.
Can you give us some information regarding past practice and what we've done in the past?
It's a mixed bag. There have been some that have been granted. Usually they've been for older houses. It's something that when you purchase the house, you have two front yards. I mean, the two front yards has existed since things started in 1932, so it was in place when this house was built. And just as a correction, for an accessory building, the side yard setback is 15 feet, not 25.
So could we put it on this line of the septic, to, you know, here? Where with, with living, a lot of them? Couldn't you put it in there?
No, because you're too close to the septic system. You have to maintain a 10-foot separation to the septic system, and then you still have the side yard. But as Christine said, you can move the side yard 15 feet.
But she said it only has to be 15 feet, not 25.
But again, you have an issue with the proximity of the septic system. And, do you understand what he said? To be honest?
I think so, yeah.
Do you want to be sort of, and the patio? Into here?
I mean, I guess so. I didn't want to put it too close to my neighbor's yard. For anyone who knows our property, we're on kind of a, a little bit of a slope, so we're up...
I mean, can we come up?
Oh, I'm sorry. Eric Polinski, for the record, the homeowner. For anyone who knows our site on the corner of Oak Hill and Rimmon, we're on a little bit of a hill. And we put some, we actually came before you a few years ago to get relief for the retaining walls. And so where I want to put this barn structure is on a sloped area. So actually, we would build it into the slope. So a lot of the structure would be below grade. And really, the only exposure to Rimmon Road would be like the opening or the main doors. But the rest of it would kind of fall into the slope. So we thought it would be unobtrusive, plus it's a slightly wooded area. If I move it somewhere else, I'll have to cut down trees, and it'll look like heck. And I just didn't want to disrupt the neighbor to this side. So I kind of thought it was the best of all worlds, where it really won't be that visible. You might see a little bit of the structure, but most of it will be buried into the grade. So, and it would connect to this lower driveway nicely. So that was our thinking. You know, alternatively, at great expense, I could relocate my septic system and put it in an unregulated area, you know, where I don't need relief. But then you'll have the entire structure visible to all the neighbors. And I'm just trying to be, you know, I'm trying to keep it low-key is my intention. And not super expensive. But we could use the extra storage. Our garage, it's two-car, but it's really very small. So we don't have a lot of extra storage. So that's primarily the reason that we're wanting to build the structure.
So, I mean, part of the struggle I think that we're having is, as you know, John Paul, is that for the zoning board of appeals, the idea is to either reduce noncompliance or wipe it out. It's not made to increase noncompliance. So we're kind of struggling with, because this is increasing noncompliance.
Inconformance with your regulations, it can't be financial and it can't be self-inflicted. That's a topographical. And what he's saying is, it's part of the, of the, of the seeking of relief, is the fact that he has a topographical issue. He has slope, and he has the fact that the lot has two front setbacks. You know, it takes off, probably is essentially half the lot. The front setbacks.
But what's the hardship?
I'm sorry?
What's the hardship of...
The fact that you can't move the setbacks. You know, we're not gonna come to the zoning board and change the setbacks from 75 to 50 or 30.
But it's, but it's a storage unit, it's not, it's not their house.
I'm sorry?
But what is the hardship on the storage unit, is what I'm...
It's the hardship itself. In other words, whether it's a storage unit or a dwelling unit, it's, there's a hardship here. Or there's a reported hardship in that, you know, you have very limited place to put it that conforms to your regulations without a great deal of expense.
John, what if you were off the patio? There's an area in here which is compliant?
Behind house.
And doesn't have wetlands, doesn't have a septic, and there's often another driveway connecting?
Yeah, the problem is there's no access. I'm sorry. The problem is there's little access. There's certainly other areas on the property where we could put it. You know, it's just you wouldn't have access. There's a slope on this side.
Well, it's no steeper than the slope on the other side.
But we would sink it into the grade, so it would actually be on the level, same level as the driveway. It would cut out into the hill and kind of nestle it into the slope with a foundation, is, was our thought.
So it's 308, as you come up, it's 306 down near the road, then it comes to 308. So you're coming up the hill. So you could still nestle it into the slope that's there, and it would be compliant.
Chris, where?
We could, we could put it in the backyard. We would eliminate most of our backyard.
A weight on the opposite side from Oak Hill, where it kind of almost makes a point.
On the southern.
I guess that's the southern side, yeah.
Back here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So why can't you just move it over here? And you can get it in, because first of all, this can be 15, 15. You have more footage here than Shaw.
I'm sorry, I can't see.
No, no, what I'm saying is...
Dr. Wiznius wants to know why you put it here.
No, no, you're saying that this on, for the side, this type of building, it can be 15 feet from the boundary. Why didn't you put it in here? And fit it in to, because this actually should be over here more.
Yeah, well, I...
And then you still have, it wouldn't be that different to get to it than this. I'm just...
No, no, it's a great question. The septic system is right here.
Yeah, but you can put it behind it.
But then I wouldn't have access to here. And my neighbor's yard, this is our sideline, I'm trying to be respectful of the neighbor. And this is a wooded area, this area is clear, so I wouldn't have to cut any trees, maybe a couple saplings. So I just, we're trying to strike an balance, that's all.
We're just trying to fit it in with the regulations, which is one of my, I'm kind of what I...
I get it. No, I get it. You know, we have two front yards, so we have less usable property than say, anyone who's not on a corner. Even though we knew we had a corner lot when we bought it, I just, I didn't realize that we had very little area that we could put this, but, so that's...
Whatever you do until you start doing it.
Exactly.
There's no question.
And I think we talked last time... Your property is beautiful. I mean, I think I was here when you came, and so, not that it has anything to do with...
No, no, we appreciate it, but that's, I wish I had a more compelling, you know, case, but we have limited storage. I mean, I could throw a shed in the woods. We just, we wanted to build a more permanent structure that matches the house, and we didn't want to just put up a shed. So that's how this, that was the evolution of our thought process. And then we thought, instead of a shed, if we built something a little bit larger, you know, we'd get decent storage out of it. But because the slope is there, about half the structure will be below grade, so it wouldn't be too obtrusive from the street. And again, we want to make sure that we're not infringing on our septic system. I mean, the septic system is original, so, you know, we could move the septic system down into the setback area, and then we could put a barn up there, but it'll cost me twice as much to do it.
But I think you could do it here, but how do you think it would necessarily disrupt the septic system? Because you have room, I mean, you know, it's, I don't know, I'll just...
No, no, I get it. I just, again, the neighbor's right here, and then we were quite a bit further away. We'd have to traverse the septic system to get to it. But anyway, I mean, that's, that's our story.
Is it saying like around this area here? Are you saying like over here?
No, no, like, I'm on that, on that. First of all, this line can come over, it only has to be 15 feet, just that's fine. Why else would I just put something over here? A weight from the septic, and then you have the driveway right out of here, from here.
Construction vehicles driving over a septic? That's dangerous.
Before they drive around here?
It's going around, it's a well, honey.
Are there other options that we could lay out for us?
Well, I would move the septic system, and then I would have a big above-ground structure, is what the solution would be. I just didn't want to do that to the neighborhood.
I'm a neighbor to this property. When is it time for me to say anything?
They won't forget you, I promise.
That's fine. Just tell me when is it time and to whom I should speak.
I think she can speak now, can't she?
Well, I don't remember why not.
Yeah, come on up. Say your name, where you're from, and okay, you can speak.
My legal name is Barbara Joyce Simpson. I'm known as Joyce Simpson. I live at number five Oak Hill, which is across the street from that little curved driveway. And I came to the town hall to get the plan, because I was alarmed when I had, the building was going up, right across from my mailbox. But when I looked at the plan, I was less alarmed. And the information I have so far is not alarming me. So, but I have a few questions before I think it's a great idea. So can I ask the questions of you, or the homeowners, or the builder?
Who do I... I was gonna answer the question.
First question, five questions. What is the use of this building?
We have to ask them.
Hi, everybody.
It's storage, it would be for storage, not for animals or anything of that nature.
Okay. No alarms?
Not a dance floor?
No alarms.
No. It's important, it's an important issue for me, because it's very close to the end of my property, which has a little driveway, you'll see it across the street. How high it was gonna be was of very much interest to me. And it sounds as if it's gonna be sunk into the ground, with very little above the ground and a roof. To me, low profile like that, no problem whatsoever. If it were fully above the ground, I think it might look pretty ugly, because that land is very steep already. So the last thing you'd need is a tower on that land. That wouldn't look good at all. So I think the design is very nice. That the color would be compatible to the house would be nice. You know, that it isn't gonna be orange with purple stripes, you know. I mean, we just fit into the setting there would be great. There is a large glacial rock on the corner of that curved driveway. And I would like to know that that's gonna remain where it is, because it's been there since doomsday, right?
You can have it, Joyce, if you want. We can move it.
It's not going anywhere. I have enough of my own. And my last question is, my most important question. And that is that there'll be no blasting to get this thing into the hillside. If there were any blasting, I think that would affect my septic, my well, my house very much. So I would be very, very opposed if in order to back that building into the hillside, the blasting needed to happen. So, if that happened, do they have to come back and ask your permission to blast?
Fire marshal.
It's under the jurisdiction of the fire marshal. And it's not quite what you think in terms of it being a big kaboom. It's a...
I know, but it'll shift, it's too close to me.
They, when they blast, as I say, it's under the jurisdiction of the fire marshal. They have to inventory all the properties around, and then they have seismographs that they put out around to measure what the oomph is.
So the procedure is, if they hit ledge and they needed to blast, would it have to go to the fire marshal for permission?
They would have to go to the fire marshal, and as long as it's covered.
And I would be informed?
No. Well, yes.
Yes.
Because you would be, through the blasting process, you would be notified, because you're not in a buddy neighbor, but you're a neighbor across the way.
Have you investigated?
You said no, and I said, would I be informed? You mean yes or no?
I mean, yes. Because you're, what I was explaining is, you're not in a buddy, you're a buddy of a person.
I'm actually not the closest neighbor. There is a neighbor that Eric is courteous about, that this thing shouldn't be too close to the, their property. And I think where it's placed is probably the best place, because half his property is wet, and half of it is steep. It's not a fabulous property to find a septic, so...
For the record, blasting is not anticipated.
Not anticipated?
It's not anticipated.
But I would be informed if you hit it.
Yes, that's a, that's a procedure when you go to the fire marshal. They notify the neighbors.
Okay.
But as Christine said, normally for stuff like this, it's a, it's not like you see in the movies where the building comes down and the stuff goes up in the air.
I don't, I don't want any blasting they might have, sorry.
Look, it should, for the record, we should not be blasting.
A few ideas we could toss around about other spots where it could be. Could it go in the area where the patio is?
No more questions from the room.
Unless you have more.
I don't have more. Thank you. Thank you. Put your hands up.
The patio would be within the, you know, the setback, right? So like in here?
Yeah.
Well, this is, we just built this. This is brand new patio with stone wall and everything around it. So we really don't, it was fairly expensive. But this is our, this is our sole backyard right here. This is wooded along here. So we have very little backyard. I mean, it is an alternate location, there's no doubt about it. It's just, you know, I mean, I guess I could, if I had to, maybe it could go there.
What type of access do you need to this? Do you need vehicle access, or...
Well, we thought we'd have a little, like an apron to it or something.
So you're gonna store, are you gonna store cars in it?
Well, it might be a car, we have a quad, you know, we're gonna be...
Okay, so you have vehicles driving to it.
Yeah.
So you would need some sort of pathway.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, you know, if we were, got the relief and put it down here, we'd probably pave a little apron to it, you know, and make it, you know, landscape and so forth.
And you wouldn't be able to do that, you wouldn't be able to pave that with the existing structure here, with the patio here, right?
Yeah, you couldn't really, but that would just take up the entire backyard, so we would have to, I don't, I really don't know. I mean, we didn't...
Well, I think you'd have to come to us for regulations for that too, because you can't get around this corner right here, right? Unless you put 5 feet, if it's 15 feet. And then here, you've got wetlands. So I don't see how you would be able to even do that.
Yeah, well, that's, there's a, that's a wall. These are slight steps up, so you can't really get in.
So you can't go over here?
You can't go there at all.
And so if you wanted to put something over here, Chris, would he have to come and ask us for that?
I think if it was 15, I can get, this is 25 feet. I think, I heard Chris say 15 feet.
So if he were to put some sort of vehicle access, like a... I was thinking, when I talked about it, this is another driveway. And I just thought it would come in.
Yeah. I wouldn't, that's our entire backyard, Chris.
Because this is the same slope here, as you said.
We're just, this is wooded, so we're just trying to stick it off into the wooded area, really, because we don't use this. Just a natural part of the, part of the lot.
So I mean, I think the, I mean, I think what we need to decide is if this case for hardship is viable, right?
Okay. Well, I was wondering with that, Chris, let me ask one other public question. Because one of the rules, as I explained, is this can't be, so, he can't create the problem, right? He can't do like a self-imposed hardship.
Right. You're correct.
Okay, so, but the fact that you want to build something, isn't that imposing a hardship that didn't exist before?
I guess you could. He could have took it at that one. I mean, there's no guarantee that any piece of the property that he can do absolutely everything that he might want to do with something. There are constraints upon land. And there are times when you may or may not be able to do something that you want to do because of the land. And at that point, that's the answer, is that, you know, you're limited to what you have.
Well, and I think that's why I had asked, what have we been doing? Because with corner locks, if this is imposing a problem, and I hate to say this, maybe we're requiring, maybe our regulations aren't allowing us to, you know, the people shouldn't have to come here to get a variance if a corner lot shouldn't be...
There are many towns that, when you have a corner lot, you pick one, one road that you front on, and then the other side becomes a side yard. And it's typically where your driveway, you know, comes in, that's your street address or road address. And that becomes your front yard. I happen to live on a corner lot in...
Well, the house is very close to the road.
No, we're 50 feet back.
Yeah, but it's a 50.
But, but, you know, it's...
My house, yes, it's 800, because it was built in 1900.
But in our situation, I love that, me too. But in our situation, we are requiring them to have two front yards, no matter what.
Right, of 75 feet, yes. So, and I have historically no idea why that was something that was a thing.
This is a good case on, I mean, this.
You know, it's, it's something that, you know, planning and zoning could still consider changing that particular aspect of it. At one point, there were two front yard, two front yard setbacks, independent on the road, there were different setbacks that you added. So from Rimmon Road, which was a state highway, you had to add an extra 50 feet. Why? And so it'd be, it made many, many, you know, structures non-conforming. And at the last go-around, when they readied their regulations, they took out that additional front yard setback and just left it at just the 75 feet, running the additional 50 off a state highway, or 40 off a main road, town road, or 25 off a whatever road, regular road. So, I mean, they have, you know, it's something that we could, you could convey to them and say, you know, you're seeing variances come to you for this because of this issue. And is this something that they can address?
We've done it for more with other examples, not this particular corner example, but we've done it.
Well, because I'm thinking about the, there was a property on Beechwood Road, and it was on a, and there was a side street off of that, and they were on a corner, and they put an addition on the house.
Right.
So...
And they had to come to you for a variance.
Yeah.
And it was a fairly minor variance, because there was something there that they took down, but then there was a slight enrichment when they did that.
What, will you, will you, we have it, we have it.
That's what they're, that's what they're discussing right here.
Yeah, 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 yeah. No, 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 I'm just...
That's, because it's a little steeper, it takes out the rest of his backyard.
I know.
No, that's, it's a valid point. It's a valid point, Dr. Wiznius. It's a valid point.
Is this a case load sent to them?
Is this the best case though to send to them? Before, you know?
It's the one that's in front of us.
Yeah, but is it the best one?
We could do research, too, for the other cases.
Because I don't want to send something that, then it gets rejected, and I feel like we could have approved it here, because...
They're allowing it. They're allowing a variance.
I understand that, but if we're contemplating sending it to planning and zoning to, to variance, do we want to send this down? Is my question. Is this the best case for that?
It wouldn't be a case going to them. It would be a generic request to change their regulations.
So would they have to present, these are my questions. Would they have to present it to planning and zoning?
No.
No, absolutely not. We're gonna ask our zone, our planning and zoning commission to change the zoning.
So we request that?
We're gonna request, yes.
And we often have to agree to that to request that?
Well, it's just, we're just discussing it, yeah.
Well, that's my question. Would we have to agree to request that? Would we vote on that to request that? That's my question. These are my questions.
I don't know. Chris, do you know? That would work.
We don't think a, we don't think a formal vote would be signed.
If you take a formal vote, you would need a regular majority, not, not your super majority for approving something.
But what we're contemplating here is sending to planning and zoning. So what are the steps for that, is my question?
You would, you would say to them, you know, we've had a history of, of variances coming to us because of two front yards on the property.
Who would say to them? Do we need a majority to say to them?
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Either, it can be a consensus, that you can take a formal vote, and it could be a two to three, and then you've got, you know, whichever way it rolls, you would, you know, if you want to take a formal vote, you can't. If you want to do it by consensus and say, we want to send something to them, the housing committee is sending stuff to them, and they haven't taken formal votes. They've just discussed it, and by consensus said, we want to suggest this to them. Because just because you suggest something, doesn't mean that they're gonna do it. Because it would have to go through a whole process with them, where it would have to be the subject of a public hearing. It would be sent off to the council of governments to review. They would comment on it, to see if there's any intermunicipal impact or impact on Long Island Sound, which generally with stuff like this, they don't do. But, you know, there's a whole process that it would go through.
And then what happens if it doesn't, they don't approve the zoning? Does it come back to us for another appeal, or is it dead?
It could come back to you for another, it depends on what you do with this one. I mean, if you grant this one, it doesn't have to come back.
Exactly, that's a separation.
But the contemplation is, we wouldn't grant it, and we would ask for a change of regulation. So my question is, if we didn't grant it and ask for a change of regulation, and it wasn't passed, then it comes back to us?
They, they would have the opportunity to come back to you, yes, but not for six months, because you can't come back with exactly the same thing in six months. You're not supposed to have to re-ear something.
If you have a six-month waiting period.
Right. But at this stage of the game, it's, the way it works to them, they would have to consider it, they would schedule it for hearing, they have to wait for the council of governments, who basically meets the same week that they meet, so it's usually throwing that off another month. So if they decided to have a hearing one month, it's typically two months out before they actually have the hearing. They can act on it that night, and then they have to establish an effective date, which is typically a month out, because there's other things that have to get filed and, and hung up.
Is it, is it reasonable to get this on that agenda, like, straight away, and then, or is it, is there a backlog of files that are...
At the moment, what they're doing, which I'm hoping they're doing, is they redid their regulations in 2019, and when they redid them, they, we had two members of planning and zoning who really worked very hard trying to get them to be good. But they were based on a form-based zoning thing out of hand, and, and so what we got was mishmash of stuff. So right now, I'm trying to get them focused on just cleaning up what we've got, because what we've got isn't searchable, it's not all-in-one documents. So I'm first trying to get them to do that, and then they're gonna consider a bunch of changes to the regulations, inclusive of some housing things. And I would anticipate that something like this would fall into that second wave of changes, not the first wave.
So it would merely be on the agenda, no one would get up and present from our committee or from them?
When they, when you have the public hearing, you could, yeah. I mean, we can, I can draft a letter that I can send around to you, if that's what you choose to do, to make sure that what's forwarded to them as a recommendation mirrors what your thoughts are. Because if not my recommendation, it would be your recommendation.
Right, similar to what you had suggested, that, or not suggested, that you have, Bethany, as an example.
Ah, there's, there's many towns that only have one front yard. In a sense, it penalizes people who live over there.
It does, it does. And I'm sorry that we're using this as the case, but we have to start thinking in that way, in my opinion. We have to start thinking, are we causing hardship based on the regulation?
Because, I mean, I believe it was, it came from here when we took out that second front yard setback.
Yes.
Because you were seeing so many things come through based on that second front yard setback, which really had no basis in anything.
Right. Are we seeing a lot of those? Are we seeing a lot of this? I'm fairly new to the committee, so I'm asking, like, to the people that are defending, do you see this a lot?
Yeah, it's a, it's a whole part of it, yeah.
Yeah, and do we grant them?
Well, think about what it, even if they're having them to us, think about what the difference is in the, in the variant, in the, in the, I don't know what I'm trying to say, the yardage, you know, the acreage.
So what would it change it to?
It would be a side yard. You picked, like you said.
It would give them an additional 50 feet.
That's my question.
On one side.
Gotcha.
Where they, they have to maintain 75 right now. So in this particular...
And so in this particular case, it would, it would...
They wouldn't be here seconding a variance from you if they chose Rimmen Road.
This to be their side yard?
Yeah.
What's your address currently?
Four, 4 Oak Hill, but our driveway is on Rimmen Road. It always has been.
Would they have to change their address?
But one is postal and one is, I don't think it has.
They wouldn't have to change it? I mean, in all honesty, you know, from a safety perspective, you generally want to have the address on the road where your driveway really is.
But it looks like their driveway is on Rimmen.
It is, it is.
Yeah. And their address is Oak Hill Lane, right?
Yeah, but the address is assigned through the accessory property, so you can't tell you who's assigned it.
But it doesn't matter where the side yard or the backyard is, based on the address?
It, this would be a first-case test on that. And we've seen addresses changed. I'm not sure that that would have to happen.
I'm getting the sense that, like, property, do we, I mean, this forward with...
But I mean, even if, if you look at the map, and even if you said, okay, so we're in Oak Hill Lane, and you told it, you didn't have 75 feet from Rimmen, you're only gonna have 25 feet. So where right now, the structure would have to be up in the area where the patio is and where they're looking at, it could be down closer to the road. Whether or not that's a safety issue in terms of herblor, or not, I have no clue.
Yeah, we don't know if that's a wooded area that fires a lot of...
Again, it's a, trees are not an issue.
It might be a neighbor issue, though.
But it's, it's the variances are the issue.
Yeah, I understand that, but...
It's not anything else.
Yeah.
So one way to look at it would be, just as a group, talking among ourselves.
Are we close on that?
I don't know. Does that, are there any more comments?
Yeah. Yeah, we're all set. Are, are you all set? Do you have any questions?
So we can close that, and we're just gonna...
We're done.
All right, so, so if as a group, we feel strongly enough that...
Do you want to make a motion to close it?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to close that.
All set.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all right. So what I started to say was, if as a, as a committee or board, that we would feel strongly enough about this issue to send it to zoning, is that a true statement or not?
I think that's, I think that's, I'm getting that sense, yes.
I have to be convinced, because I've, I have not been here long enough to see this many applications come before us. I don't know what our past practice has been, and so I need a little feedback, a little bit more from the group here to convince me that this is a case that we should be sending to planning and zoning.
But this case, it's not the case that's going to planning and zoning.
Yeah, but how many cases before us?
But I think it's the concept. It's not even how many cases. Think about the concept. It's a corner law. Why are we requiring them to have two front yards? Forget about how many variances came to us, right? Is the regulation appropriate?
I'm just thinking of what planning and zoning is gonna say. Well, they bought, they bought this property knowing that.
We're not gonna tell them, but that's not, we're not gonna say Mr. and Mrs...
But why can't they ask that question? You know the property you're getting when you purchase it.
Well, the question, are they, are they gonna think this is a big enough issue to have to ask that?
Well, yeah, and the question is, well, when you buy a lot, you know, you know the variances.
We're supposed to.
Yeah, so why are we changing the regulations when you know what you're buying?
And why are we approving variances?
That's, these are all questions I'm asking. Well, anyway, so what I was trying to get to was, if, as, if we had a majority of this group, this board that said it should go forward to zoning, then we might want to make the point of, that this is causing aggravation and grief, and say, we should approve it. This.
I'm in favor of that.
And then, you know, it's not a test case, but it's, it just adds to the history of aggravation that, that our citizens are having in terms of when they want to get something done. So it's not, it doesn't become a test case. It just adds to the, to the, the series of aggravation and grief that our town residents suffer.
But that's why we serve on the board.
No, no, right.
We serve on the board to take the aggravation.
No, no, right, right, but again, it's...
To make sure we enforce the regulation.
Right.
So that's my concern, though. I don't know if this is gonna pass.
Make it two separate issues. Maybe, maybe make it two separate issues.
I just, I have, my concern is this is gonna be back in front of us in six months. And if that's it, if you're fine with that, that's fine.
I don't care. It's two separate issues. We have to act on this. I just think they're two separate issues. I think we have to act on this tonight.
Yeah.
And then we have to tell ourselves, is this something that we are seeing? Is the regulation not in line, not reasonable, especially for a corner law? We could approve it or disapprove it either way. It doesn't matter.
It still's connected to...
It's still, we have to ask ourselves the question.
Right.
Is this the appropriate regulation for a corner law? And each time something comes up to us, is this...
If we're looking at the symmetry, you know, just even, you said that on the corner, but it is a tremendous inconvenience. Well, I guess we have to have two different things to... No, I agree. It's two separate things. So again, if, I think, if we feel strongly enough about it, then we can say, again, this is, we, we see this enough, that this regulation is, is not, is not providing whatever zoning was trying to provide for. And as, as Chris said, other towns have a choice. So this is not like a, a brand-new concept. This is out there. And Bethany's not that far away, right? So, you know, so, so within the, so within, you know, our local geographical area, this, this concept, this issue has come up before and has been dealt with in differently than we have done with it, or our, our zoning. So I, I, again, I, I agree with Cindy that this is, they're two separate issues. So we, we can vote on this, this appeal, period. And then if we so desire, we can have, ask Chris to bring this forward to zoning and say, guys, we've seen this too many times. It's not really providing any great benefits in town, and perhaps in concert with other towns, local towns, we should, not we, they should change it. So I, I, I think there are two separate issues.
Because if Oak Hill was their side yard...
Right.
It would be fine.
Exactly, right.
So I agree that, I'm seeing it now, there are two separate issues. I think we should submit to planning and zoning. That's my opinion. But if we're gonna submit to planning and zoning, is it hypocritical to disprove this appeal?
No, that's, that was my point. That's exactly what I was trying to...
I think it would be hypocritical to deny the appeal.
Right, that's what I said. If we think it as a group, as a board, that being the case, we should make our case, not case, but we should, we should make our point, which is, this is, this is not benefiting too many people in our town. Okay, now having said all that, someone want to make a motion?
Are you okay with what we're just saying? Right, so if this, if our regulations were changed, this would be the side yard, and they wouldn't even be here.
Correct.
And we, well, I feel, and everyone else feels that a corner law should not be penalized in having two front yards. Especially knowing there's other light-kind towns that have that regulation.
Right. Okay, so should we make a motion on this? All right, I'll make a motion to approve the appeal. I'm sorry. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. You squeak, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Now we have to make a motion.
And we provoked so much thought and conversation, I...
This is the longest meeting I've ever had.
It's the Polinsky rule.
We won't come back for another 10 years.
Most thinking I've had.
That's right, I will say thank you. I got plenty, Bob, thank you. Nope, don't need it, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
We still have to nod the test bits, and I gotta change it again. Thank you, and have a pleasant evening. I promise I will be back next month.
We can see you next month, I feel.
No, 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 please.
We saw you last month.
Well, no, wait, can I tell you what? If you come back next month, bring brownies.
Bring what?
Brownies.
I'd be more than happy to.
Nothing worse than a uniform.
Goodbye. I will, I promise you.
Committee, about the corner yard setback.
One, one side should be...
One side should be identified as a front yard and not be, right?
I don't know. Chris, do you have suggestions to have it work?
I'll, I know what you want to say. So you draft something and I'll send it around.
No, no, I agree.
No, no, I completely agree. And that's why I voted today for that. We can't be hypocritical, and how we're gonna vote here, and how we're gonna word this letter. I am completely on your side with this.
So Chris, Chris, would you want to hear that? Draft something?
I'll draft something, and I'll send it out, and then you guys vote it, or whatever.
Now, are there others that will research this? I made a motion.
Oh, okay. Oh, no, I'm sorry.
I second.
All in favor? Okay, you know, it's good.
So are there individuals that can help us research this, to identify other towns, to help run this forward to them?
I can simply call the council of governments, and they have a list of what regulations are out there, and then they can answer that.
Okay, great.
So there are resources that don't require a lot much effort.
It's our phone.
Okay, good.
Perfect, thank you.
All right, now we have to...
Chris, you're magical.
I am.
With your wisdom, it's just amazing. We'll make a motion to get for your, for the last one.
Okay, I'll second it. Oh, no, I'm not saying the last one. You want to second it? I'll... Okay, Bonnie, excellent, all in favor? Okay, good. All right, now, the next most important thing.
Is to adjourn.
That's correct. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, here you go.
We better send the phone this one out.
Oh, yeah, it's a way of stuff, yeah.
Just a little more of a contract, wow.
Well, I think there should be someone representative of our group at the hearing. I think we need to, if we're gonna really do this, we need to be fully enforced, committed to this.
Have we done this before?
No, I'm not against, I'm just saying, I, I don't think this
We adjourned, right?
Yes.